Welcome everyone to the October 8th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. Tonight is a better sweet evening. As we see on tonight's agenda, we have a Community Day check presentation where we as a community will give back to our first responders. But as many of us here are already aware of, we have lost a giant in our community, Mr. Glenn Seymour. Glenn was a father, a brother, a lifelong volunteer. He was a 38-year employee to Lower Southampton Township and was a friend to everyone that knew him. Glenn's memory will be eternal after the Pledge of Allegiance if we can remain standing for a moment of silence. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence. The Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 5:30 where we discuss personnel and legal matters. The Board of Supervisors also held a budget workshop at 6:30 where we had discussed many, many different items. Mr. Ryan spoke about the recreational fund 5, the Dolphin Fund 14, Liquid Fuels Fund 35. Mr. Dillon and Mr. Italia spoke about updating the Town Center ordinance. We spoke about installing a speed hump on Harding Avenue, replacing a trailer that had got damaged in a accident. We spoke about the Play Wiki Farm vacancy, local share grant. Mr. Italia also spoke about a six-month lookback on the zoning department. The chief gave us an update on school bus cameras. Mr. Everett and the board spoke about rumble strips on Yes, Henry Avenue. I know we have some residents out there tonight. The board is planning on looking into this and hopefully moving forward with something. Mr. Mulholland spoke about a trunk or treat on October 18th, house decorating contest in our township, field lights being replaced over at Russell Elliott Park. And Mr. Keats spoke about a Play Wiki Farm update. All right. Now, as you see, we have Community Day check presentation to the Police Department, Shop With a Cop, program Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad, Feasterville Fire Department, and Lower Southampton Fire Department. I will be calling up individual departments to meet with individual supervisors. I would like everyone to remain standing and then after we're all done with the check presentation, we're going to break for a few minutes for some photos. So at this time, I would like to call up Mrs. Bowman and she has something, I believe, for the Feasterville Fire Department. Feasterville Fire Department reps, please come forward to the microphone.
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, presenting you this check for $3,494.
Beautiful. If you guys could just slide over and at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Castle. Mr. Castle, sir, I believe you have something for the Lower Southampton Fire Department. If the reps could please stand up.
Gentlemen, it's our honor and a lot of this is because of Mr. Kruteradis's tireless work on his program, the Community Day, that we're presenting this check for $3,000. I read this. Thank you very much.
At this time, Mr. Ottinger, sir, would you like to grab your check and we could have some reps from the Police Department come up to the microphone, please?
I'm sure a lot of kids will have fun with this.
All right. All right. And I'm still hiding back here behind everybody, just so you guys know. Mr. Perretano, sir, you are next with the check for Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad.
You don't have a check?
Today, on behalf of the citizens of the township, Board of Supervisors, presenting this check for my proceeds of Community Day for $3,494 and 10 cents.
At this time, we're going to break just for a few minutes for some quick photos. I just wanted to follow up with the Community Day. You know, it's been my pleasure doing this now. I believe, you know, this is the seventh year. We started off just with the back-to-blue one. It's grown greatly over the past seven years. This year, we tried something different. We did a cow chip bingo. Probably most of us know what a cow chip bingo is. It's kind of interesting, but I have to say, the gentleman who won, his name is Paul Smith. Paul Smith, and I'm going to give him a plug as to what he did. He owns Scott Air Conditioning out on Street Road. Paul's pot, his share was over $1,800. He gave the whole thing back to the first responders. Mr. Smith? All righty. Now, we see proclamation resolution 2025-34 honoring Eagle Scout, Robert Dooley. Mr. Dooley, would you like to come up to the microphone? Mrs. Bowman, why didn't you actually go out to the floor and read the proclamation?
Nice work. See, you want me to do it on here?
It should be on, though.
Okay. All right. This is proclamation resolution 2025-34. Whereas Lower Southampton is a township of the second class, in the County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority vested in it by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton does hereby resolve as follows. Whereas Robert Dooley, a member of Boy Scout Trip 153, has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest honor awarded by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas for his Eagle Scout service project, Robert Dooley replaced all 20 of the Bluebird Houses at Play Wiki Farm. Whereas Robert led a team of 15 scouts and adult volunteers who dedicated eight hours to constructing the new birdhouses and commenced installation at Play Wiki Farm on August 15, 2025, completing the project on August 16, 2025. And whereas Robert's efforts in leadership, along with the team's excellence, excellent craftsmanship, have provided the bluebirds with a safe and improved nesting habitat, ensuring their continued presence at the Play Wiki Farm for years to come. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton hereby honor Robert Dooley for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, commends his exemplary leadership, and expresses its sincere appreciation for his meaningful contribution to the community and the preservation of wildlife at Play Wiki Farm. Adopted by at least a majority of the members of the Board of Supervisors at a duly advertised public meeting of the township on the eighth day of October 2025, at which a quorum was present. Congratulations.
All right. Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Once again, Mr. Dooley. Now, the Board of Supervisors have to sign the proclamation. We award it to the young man out there, Mr. Dooley, and we're going to break for a couple of minutes. Maybe his family would like to come up for some quick photos, too. So let us sign off on this to make it official. All right. We, 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 Mrs. Bowman, we still have to make the motion. Would you like to make the motion for that?
I would.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
This is a legal question, and he refused to answer it.
I did answer.
Would the treasurer know?
No.
No? Who, who knows? He's like, "Sir, I, I emailed you like five or six times, the same question."
Right.
Can we, can we get a resolution on this? I mean, do we know if Mr., if a subcontractor who does not have the authority to do what he did to me is going to be liable?
Mr. Stevens, you would have to take that to court and let a judge or a jury decide.
That's not, that's not true, sir.
What you're claiming...
That's not true. Let's say that Michael Italia is found liable, just out of the blue, right? Is it the, is it the township's responsibility to pay for his crimes being a subcontractor who has never given the authority to do what he did? This is not a court thing. Are, are we gonna have to pay for Michael Italia's crimes? That's what I'm asking.
We've already been down this road, Mr. Stevens.
We've never been down this road. I've never gotten an answer to this question.
You've changed the question so many different times over two years.
Is because the only reason that Mr. Dooley could justify defending...
Don't, don't you yell out at the public and children, lower voice.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I've been very good about that. I've really tried. But it's very difficult when no one will answer my questions.
But do not turn around and talk to children and adults in the audience with a raised voice.
Well, I was, I was away from the microphone. I'm, I'm truly sorry, ma'am. I'm truly sorry. I will do everything in my power to respect you.
Mr. Stevens, your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Really?
Three minutes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
So I get no answers for three minutes?
Three minutes is up. Thank you. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment?
That's beautiful.
Hey, how everybody do it? I'm sorry, I'm here again with the same story. I don't wanna...
Hey, you, Dylan. I apologize. We forget your name. I know you live...
That's right. My name is Ramon Calles. I live in 620 Mill Road. We were here last week, I mean, last meeting. The reason I come again because we didn't receive any communication from you guys. So I'm here again to address my problem and tell you guys, you know, I did look for some solutions to see if we can fix it. I went to the neighbors again. They said they never heard again that the street, that we own the street. And I looked for some partial fixing, put some gravel or something. It's over $2,000, and they laugh at my face. It's becoming a problem, excuse me. It's becoming a problem because it is, I'm, I'm the last one at the house, I mean, at the street. That, that road is gonna be, disappear if the winter is gonna be rough. So I'm here again, you know, to tell you guys, you know, give you my information to each one of you, if I may. Can I give you a packet with the patients?
Absolutely, sure.
So how everybody got my information? Please, you know, just tell me. I don't wanna be losing everybody's time or my time.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley.
If it's one of you guys that I have to call, please let me know where I have to address the story. At the end, you know, like I said, it's, I'm the last one at the, at the street, and nobody else is gonna care, you know. And, you know, I address the flat tire thing 'cause I already have one. And, you know, it, it can happen to anybody in an emergency.
We understand.
So you were here last week. Another gentleman spoke before you. He gave me a photo similar to this with his contact information. I contacted the, uh, the staff here to get all the background information that I could. I copied, I sent him an email that I was working on it and, and that, you know, we would be addressing it. I don't have all the answers yet. The engineer and I have been given direction by the board to take a further look at, to take a further look at this. So your concerns are not being ignored. In fact, they've been worked on diligently since you've last been here.
Thank you. So that's my information. If you could please copy because I spoke to him about half an hour before I came over here, and he said he hasn't received any information. That's why I also came over here. His name is Kent Silver.
The email.
Oh, very perfect. Can you send it to me, please? So that way, I wouldn't bother you guys. Appreciate it, and I thank you for your time again, okay?
Great, we thank you for coming. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I won't be able to save the whole meeting. I have other things to do. Thank you for your time and for whatever you guys are doing for everybody.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Did you sign it?
Yep, go Phillies. That's right. I heard somebody say it out there. That's right. Alright. If anybody else out there tonight for public comment would like to come up? State your name, your address, and a three-minute time limit.
Clarence Foster. I live at 132 Cookside Drive, Feasterville, in the Pine Tree Farm section. I'm here requiring assistance from the board. We've been fighting flooding for years, and we keep getting a runaround and a runaround. Last time I was here, the cemetery wanted to rip everything out, and they had already started. When they put a halt on it, then these guys agreed to let them do it. Now the flooding's twice as bad, to the point they had to call up fire rescue 'cause the guy got trapped in his car in front of my house. That's how bad the water gets. But nothing's being done. What, can workshop something?
Yeah, Mr. Foster. As I explained earlier, you were, your problem was one of the topics of our work session. We're trying to coordinate a meeting to make sure all the professionals are here. And we're gonna, then, once we have that date, we're gonna notify, uh, I think your wife gave me a list of, of affected addresses, and we're gonna notify those people when that meeting's gonna be, and it'll be a workshop meeting.
Alright, can we also at that meeting discuss, apparently you don't have a variance 'cause of the creek?
Well, we'll talk about all aspects of it. The, uh, our professionals are well-versed with the, with the issue.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Thank you. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Hello.
Hello. Good evening. Um, my name is Donna Lerrick. I'm at 126 Crocus Road in Feasterville. I'd like to bring up a concern about a rumor about the possibility of the Lower Southampton Police Department might be eliminated. The rumor began on Facebook. I think at least one member of the board might be aware of it. Uh, from the posts and comments, it seems like this may be a premature leaking of information from ongoing negotiations or something. I don't pretend to understand all that. But whether or not it was intended to become public knowledge, it's out there. So many residents are concerned about that, and we were hoping that maybe the board could address this in some way. I don't know if anything can be done now, but we're concerned that in the future, if things happen and it's a done deal, we won't have an opportunity to let our, our voices be heard, so...
Thank you, Ms. Lett. We appreciate you coming and stating your, your opinion. Thank you so much. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment?
Public comment? I mean, what is, what are you guys doing?
Public comment is for public comment. At the end of the meeting, I do have something that I will address, so... Alright, anybody else out there tonight? Alright, going once, going twice. Alright. We will now move on to our consent agenda. Line one, A, approval of minutes, September 24th, 2025; B, approval of budget minutes, September 24th, 2025; C, approval of accounts payable, October 8th, 2025; D, approval of surver recurring monthly bills, October 8th, 2025; E, approval of professional escrow release for Step Ahead Consulting, 140 Street Road for the amount of $2,321.25. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second his motion.
Alright, Mr. Parrotana, you read the motion. Mr. Castle needs a second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item two, consider approval of Speed Hump for Harding Avenue. Mr. Coppin, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. Looking for approval to get a speed, speed hump installed on Harding Avenue between Fifth and Sixth Street. Uh, we're looking for approval for to have MMR Paving Company for a total of $4,000 to install the speed hump.
Alright, very good. Thank you, Mr. Coppins. So this is something that we had started last year on Hoover Avenue. It seems to have helped. We're hoping it will help on Harding, too. So the motion would be to approve installation of Speed Hump by MMR Paving Company on Harding Avenue for the amount of $4,000. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item three, consider approval of purchase of a Public Works trailer. Mr. Coppin, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. We're looking to replace our Public Works enclosed trailer, which was involved in an accident. Uh, we're looking to have, purchase our new trailer from Southeast Cargo LLC for a total of $11,314.
Alright, very good. So the motion would read, to approve the purchase of a Public Works trailer from Southeast Cargo LLC for $11,314. That also, that price also includes upgrades, such as a 12-inch on-center floor upgrade, a 5,000-pound rear door upgrade, matching six-lug spare tire. That trailer will have a flat front, white in color, and this is also provided that the insurance company actually totals out our current trailer, which is expected to happen. So do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parrotana. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Alright. Line item number four, consider appointment of the Play Wiki Farm Foundation. Well, we've had a few vacancies on the Farm Foundation over the past few months. We appreciate the time these board members have put into the Play Wiki Farm, but unfortunately, we do have a foundation member who, who had left recently, and we need to put somebody in there. So I would like to make the motion to appoint Shannon Mumper to the Play Wiki Farm Foundation for a term ending January 1st, 2030. I made the motion. Who would like to make the second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I would also like to thank everybody who had put in for this. You know, this township wouldn't run as well as it does if it wasn't for the citizens in our community, and a big thanks for everybody who was interested. Alright. Now we will move on to line item five, consider adoption of resolution 2025-35, authorizing local share grant application. Mr. Galdo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. This is with regard to the local share grant in an amount of $461,207.36. That would be going before the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the procurement and outfitting of five vehicles. Three police vehicles. Public Works has a Public Works dump truck as well as a Bobcat, I think, slash mini track loader, if I'm saying it correctly. So again, the total amount is $461,207.36. We're looking for approval so we could make this submission to the Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Galdo. So the motion would read, to adopt resolution 2025-35, authorizing the local share grant application. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ottinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Alright, moving on to managers' report. Mr. Galdo, sir.
Nothing for tonight, Board Chair.
Nothing for tonight. Alright, to my, to my right, ladies first, Mrs. Bowman.
I just wanna thank the Play Wiki Farm Foundation for a great event on Saturday. They hosted their Oktoberfence, Oktoberfest. It was a great turnout. Just to remind everybody, we are currently hosting our Halloween house decorating contest. I'm hoping the Alien House on Elmwood has, if you're out there Alien House people, I hope you enter your house 'cause it's phenomenal. So everybody that's decorating for the holidays, please enter that contest. I know a lot of you here tonight are here for various different issues. Mill Road, Henry Avenue, Harding Avenue, and I just, again, I, I always remind everybody about patience. All things in government take time. We have to gather information, do research. We have to utilize our professionals. They have to gather information and research. They have to get quotes. All these things take time, and I do not want anybody to ever think that if you bring a problem to me or to anybody else, my fellow board members, that we're just blowing you off. We don't operate that way. We really take our time. We hear you. We live here, too. We're your neighbors. So your problems are also our problems. So please be patient. It takes time. I get very impatient. All things in government take a really long time. There's a lot of rules and ordinances and statutes that you have to follow. So please, I appreciate your patience. Hang in there because we're working on it. That's, I know that sounds really lame, but we are. It's honest. I don't lie. If I tell you that I'm working on something, I'm 100% working on it. So thank you. Thank you for the turnout tonight. This is your local government. I encourage you all to continue to take part and come out and participate and have your voices heard, and thank you. Have a great night. Go Phils.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Alright, Mr. Parrotana, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna thank all that came out tonight to participate in your government. Highly appreciate it that you take an interest, and we're glad to see you all here. I wanna, again, recognize Mr. Kutsaradis for the work he does with Community Day. It's amazing the amount of stuff he gets done with, with that project. It's, it's unbelievable. And be willing to give, be able to give out this money to our first responders is just, just a great honor, I know for me and the rest of, rest of our board members. Gentleman that won and gave back $1,800, God bless him. I hope everything in his life goes right 'cause he, what he did to that, for that, probably gonna affect other people's lives. So that's, so that's great.
Agreed.
I wanna thank the scouts for coming out. It's, it's great to see the scouts at our meetings. Mr. Dooley, congratulations. I can't read my own notes without my glasses here. And, um, I just want everybody to remember, it's getting darker out. Remember the kids? Chief spoke about the, uh, the bus camera program last month. 92 people in our township passed the school bus. So let's remember, the school buses are out there, the kids are out there. There'll be, kids that do sports got dropped off late. So make sure you're keeping an eye out there and obey the, the rules of the road. And you don't have to go anywhere so fast that you need to pass the school bus. So thank you all again, and, uh, and Phillies better bring it home tonight, so... Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you, Mr. Parrotana. Mr. Ottinger, sir.
Nothing at all.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Alright, Mr. Castle, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why are we surprised at that comment? Uh, it was a wonderful day at Oktoberfest at Play Wiki Farm. I wanna thank our farm committee who worked so hard to make sure that that was a success. I'd like to remind people that our Veterans Advisory Committee will be sponsoring the first annual Veteran Suicide Awareness Walk on October 18th at Play Wiki Farm. And you could contact Dave DeBeilles at (267) 718-4475 if you would like to register in advance. That information would also be on our township website, I'm sure. To get emails from our township, sign up. LowerSouthHamptonTownship.org. You'll get one email a week. Maybe if there's an emergency, you might get another one. Uh, you also could find our fall programs on there for our park and recreation. Congratulations to our Eagle Scout, Mr. Dooley. Thank you very much for, for doing a project like that. Not only do we enjoy that, the, the birds will enjoy that as well. Um, I also wanna thank Mr. Kutsaradis. He put a lot of work in for this Community Day. And, uh, he would reach out to me once in a while for some comments or suggestions or to blow off a lot of steam. But it was a lot of work. And I don't, I don't know how he has the patience. I see he lost most of his hair over this.
Yep.
But, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That was a lot of work, and maybe you'll get a surprise one day.
Oh, gosh, you can only imagine.
Yes. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Paul Smith, who donated the proceeds of his winnings. So that was wonderful. And, Mr. Chairman, our next meeting will be...
The 22nd of October.
That is correct. Alright. First off, my and the board's deepest condolences to our friend, Mr. Glenn Seymour. Glenn was just, you know, anybody who knew Glenn, he was just an outstanding guy. He gave his life to service here in Lower Southampton Township. And, you know, he's gonna be missed. I'd like to congratulate, once again, scout, Mr. Robert Dooley. That is awesome, you know? God knows where this will go with you, but, you know, I see bright things in your future. Now, we had some residents come up tonight voicing some concerns in regards to the, uh, the current PDA contract talks. As probably most of you know, these talks are private talks. I can't go into detail with anything. After the contract is settled, which I am sure it will be, it can be public knowledge at that point. But right now, I can tell you that this board has always supported our entire team of first responders. That was evident tonight. We were always bargaining good faith for a fair contract that works for the PDA and also our taxpayers in this community. I'm sure with both groups putting their heads together, we can absolutely achieve this. And with that said, folks, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.